...meeting of the State Board of Education. At this time, everyone please stand and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which spans one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mr. Board Secretary, is this meeting going to advertise according to the Open Public Meeting Act?
Yes, it has, Mr. Mackinon.
Excellent. Can you please have your floor call?
Mr. Bauta here, Mrs. Vakto, Mr. Beshala, Mr. Rosensky, Mr. Sayang, Mrs. DePinto, Mrs. Rupuya, Mrs. Crapp, and Mr. Mackinon.
Present.
This evening in executive session, the Board of Education, under personnel, discuss non-union salaries, supervisor of mathematics, personnel, agenda items, under negotiations, the Sayarville Education Association.
Thank you. Dr. Fano, we have a presentation this evening.
Gentlemen, start your engines. Mr. Brown, Mr. Curry, Mr. Glue, and Mr. Glock are all here, and they're going to discuss the junior possible junior.
More of a discussion than a request than a presentation, although I can give you some facts. Let me give you a little history first. This past summer, we had the occasion to be probably very involved with our colleagues in different schools and talking about school improvement. The SGOs were a big topic of discussion, along with the Danielson model. But this relates to an SGO of sorts or just school improvement as such. This past summer, a proposal came across to Mr. Curry, who brought it to me, and it dealt with the possibility of exempting juniors as a way of improving both their four quarter-grade scores, their four marking period scores, and improving students' tests on the HESPA from proficient to advanced proficient. Now, this year, we were very fortunate, and I did a little study, and I have some numbers for you. This year, we were extremely fortunate. We bumped up, in language arts, from 18 percent to 24 percent in advanced proficient this year. We went from proficient to advanced proficient. We increased 6 percent. So we took our good kids and moved them even further along up the ladder. And then in mathematics, we went from 19 percent to 25 percent. So we had two significant increases, so we were talking about that a little bit. And the proposal that Mr. Curry and I and the other gentleman discussed was one that would say, we would allow, or encourage actually, juniors to be exempt if they can pull four quarters or, you know, four marking periods of As and an advanced proficient on their HESPA score. And we thought, this is just a win-win proposal. And when we did our statistics, now I have some numbers for you, on the average for the past five years, we're at about 19 percent increase. That's our baseline data, 19 percent increase from proficient to advanced proficient. And in mathematics, we were at about 19 percent, 18 and change, from proficient to advanced proficient. What we're proposing is, if you allow us to do this for this year, and it's really a one-year proposal, it's a one-year proposition because the following year, PARC comes into play. So this is our last year on the HESPA. What we're asking the board to do is allow us to exempt juniors. There's a change, so it would be a change in policy, and hopefully, what we'll do is give those kids an incentive to not only do well during their four marking periods, but also do well, a little better on the HESPA.
Are you talking about exempting just some language arts and math, because that's the HESPA test, or a whole section?
Yes.
Language arts and math.
Now, you said an A average or A minus?
A minus.
Not A?
A minus.
Okay, what is the numeric spread for an A minus?
91 and 92 are an A minus. I'm sorry, 90 to 92 are an A minus, 93 to 96 are an A, and then 97 to 100 are an A plus.
So we would tell a kid that 90 is good enough?
Well, yeah, for the seniors.
For the seniors, the senior policy speaks to an A, so 90 or above. So what we're doing is just saying, it's the same as the senior policy.
Yeah, which I would never have found out.
Okay.
I have an open mind for this.
Well, the reason why is it's a win-win. It's a win because we have approximately 325 kids in the pool that we would be addressing with this change.
What percentage of the final exam counts as the final grade?
10 percent.
10 percent. So if I had an A minus, if I had a 90, and then I aced my final exam, that would put me up into the A category.
Right.
Okay? If a kid is a junior who's applying to college, I think that A in the class is more important than what they scored on the HESPA, because I don't know any college application that asks you to list your HESPA scores. And here's my concern, I shared this with, and I know it's probably not the majority on the board, because I shared it with some of my board members, the curriculum committee over the last, I would say, seven years, has done a lot of things to raise the bar, you know, doing away with the senior early release, things that you were on board with, increasing the amount of credits to graduate, teaching algebra in the eighth grade, adding more AP courses, adding more honors courses, adding more comprehensive electives, and a few other things I can mention. And to me, this just seems to be inconsistent with that move to go in that direction. And that's just my opinion.
I don't think it represents any kind of change, because what we did, again, we did some data. We looked at the junior class, for example, and there would only be 18 kids of 4 percent that would be exempt for straight As, right? You know, if we were to have a junior policy in place. And only 15 kids are 3 percent in mathematics. So all we're looking to do, and this is a win-win proposal, this gives the kid who scores advanced proficient and can pull four As or an A average, the ability to be exempt. So it's a win for the basic coursework, and then it's a win on the testing situation, which is, you know, take a kid who's gotten four As, and he says, you know what, I know I'll pass the test, I'll just get my proficient, and maybe not try as hard as he should. So, you know, we see it as a win-win. We have nothing to lose here. I don't think we're doing our kids any harm, and I wouldn't be standing up here if I thought we would do our kids any harm in any way, shape, or form.
Does the midterm play in?
Midterm is part of it.
It has to be an A as well?
That's right.
A minus, right.
Oh, there's a difference between A and A minus.
But it's still an A. It's still an A.
Well, it's not, it's A minus.
It's an A. So it's a nine year above.
Nine year above, right.
I see it as incentive.
Right, well, see.
Do you have a number of kids that might have a B plus that you're hoping that are going to push them up to that A?
But we, it was so hard, when we went to get the data, there was literally 350 pages of, we'd have to go through every kid. So we didn't, we just pulled the As. And again, it's got to be, you know, we looked at the pool of kids in the proficient pool, which is 300 or 330 or better in the class, and said, okay, that's a big group, that's a big target group. If we could take 10 of those kids and bring them up, that's a win.
Do you want proficient or advanced proficient?
We want advanced proficient. When I looked at the kids who had existing As, 18 and 15, and not a lot of kids. So if I get five and five, it's still a win. I just don't see any lose, any way to lose this proposition.
I'm thinking, if you do have a child that maybe is pulling B pluses now, that may give them the incentive to try harder for it.
It's a little thing. It's a small thing, and it doesn't cost us anything.
If they know there's incentive.
It's a one-year pilot for us, because PARC's coming into place the following year. So HESPA, this is the last year of HESPA. It's working in some places, and we thought it'd be worth a discussion.
And then, I mean, it would be voluntary, if they, like Mr. Mackinon was saying, if they did want to take the final exam to pull their grade up, they could?
We've never had.
You're saying they could accept exemption?
In holy years, we've never had anybody say, I want to do that.
So Mr. Mackinon was saying he would like to pull his grade up?
I certainly would. What he would say is optional. If you wanted to take the final to improve that piece, then you're certainly capable of doing that.
But I think, I would think a kid that has a 90 in math and then goes advanced proficient on the math HESPA, is not afraid of one.
No. I would say, I would say you're right.
It also creates a status for the students as well, I think, as well.
Except for.
Yeah, it's a status.
Mr. Crapp, I agree with Mr. Brown on this and his crew over here, because of the simple fact, I can relate to myself when I was taking finals here at this school. I didn't really care if I passed it or not, and that's, but the incentive of a student for four marking periods and the midterm, maintaining an A average, I think is commendable for that person, you know, because of the simple fact that, you know you got the grade, why worry about the final?
I just think it says, you know, learn and forget.
But if they've got the As, well, that's fine, because they didn't learn and forget.
Yeah, I mean, I could support either side. I mean, this is not something I'm.
And it's discussion, it's good, actually, it's good philosophical discussion, because there is no right or wrong. I'm just saying that everything we looked at, there's nothing that points to anything negative in the proposal.
I have another question.
Yes.
How do the honors and AP classes fit in with that, since there are?
As and A. An A and A, there is no way to A.
Well, because I'm thinking that AP A is a lot.
Those kids have, yeah, but those kids have the potential. They've demonstrated potential to do A work.
Mr. Brown, you started your conversation with talking about SGOs, you know? The way I understand SGOs, you have a baseline test, you're using something to baseline a kid, then you have an end of course exam.
Right.
Substitutes that if you're not going to take the final.
Right. Well, good. Good.
The post-assessment for the SGO is usually going to take place prior to the final exam. And we were talking about that at the administrative team meeting last week, where we're looking at a timeframe around mid-fourth marking period, so it wouldn't indeed be that final exam anyway.
So the post-SGO exam, we improve the final exam, those students have not?
No, 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 they're never going to supplant the final exam. Are you saying, what I related this as an SGO is a growth objective to the administrators of the high school. This is a growth objective. We're saying that if 24 percent of the kids, if the 24 percent of the kids pass in language arts and advanced proficient this year, under our current standing, we're saying it, we want to see, we're going to see growth. We're going to say, I'm not going to project a 27 percent next year, or a 2 or 3 percent increase. But what we're hypothesizing is, there's going to be an increase due to this process.
Yeah, I'm intrigued, I mean, you know.
And I mean, it's what, it's what, education, it's what we're supposed to be doing now, you know?
But, Mr. Brown, why do I have to take my history exam? I got an A and M, higher than what I got in my English and my math course, why do I have to take history?
Well, it's another, it's another discussion, it's another discussion item. I mean, maybe down the line, and I know there are people, Ms. Trapp and I have had this discussion over many years about exemptions, maybe down the line, we can integrate something with the PARC test to make this a uniform policy. So I see it as another win, in that it might lead us to some information that we can use down the line in PARC, to make this an exemption for everyone down the line, because it's going to be subject tested.
Did you get any input, I assume you did that, but did you get input from teachers? Were the teachers just saying, hey, that teach English, that teach math, this is a good policy?
No, we had not, we just, this came up in the summer, Mr. Mackinon, and we wanted to roll it out, we wanted to, we read it by Dr. Al Fano, and Ms. Macedo, and Ms. Zeigner, and, you know, we were just batting it around, and we said, we'd like to talk to the kids about this, because come Friday, Monday, we have our.
I mentioned.
Well, I think our kids, I think our kids are going to be excited by it.
How about our staff, though?
I think our staff's going to be.
If I'm teaching the class.
More than excited by it.
And the kids are saying, hey, I don't have to take the final, you don't?
Well, they got to get there.
I understand.
And they're still going to get by that teacher, there's four marking periods and a midterm.
And you have to have an A each marking period.
Correct.
If I'm teaching math and language arts, I want this incentive program, because I'm assuming that the students in my class are going to be trying to achieve, obviously, that A status. And I'm from the school of, if you achieve, you reward as well.
Yes. I remember these conversations from years ago about these exemptions, and if I recall, the whole logic back then, not to have exemptions, was to raise the bar.
Right.
And in this particular case, we're only talking about juniors, and your focus is because of the HESPA, you're looking to up the HESPA.
Well, we're looking up HESPA and up marking period grades.
Right, but if I remember, if we took the HESPA out of this equation, if you take the HESPA out of the equation, then why would you just do it for juniors?
Well, we're not taking the HESPA, the object is.
It's the HESPA, so the object is the HESPA.
One of the objectives is HESPA.
All right, so the main objective that's driving this is the HESPA exam, which is why you're only doing it for juniors.
Correct.
Which is not the same logic I'm hearing sitting here. You're saying, here, you want to do it to get people to get the A, to give them the incentive to get the A, not to take the final, which is what we had talked about years and years back.
But we weren't doing as much testing as we are or will be. You know, we anticipate, you know, four or five times a year, with PARC's coming in, and correct me if I'm wrong, right, four times a year, testing that, that we didn't have to do just a couple of years ago.
Right, but I guess I'm just trying to understand the logic from why this was done away with years ago, and it didn't.
Well, the exemption, we felt the exemption years ago really hurt our kids, because they didn't test enough, because they weren't taking big tests, and they had to get acclimated to that. Now, we overtest.
So is it just the HESPA that you feel is driving the overtesting, and that's why you only want to focus on juniors' math and language?
Well, the HESPA is the score that's noted in the school report card and everything that's published, so we're going to focus on that. I mean, we couldn't do it on SATs, because that wouldn't work. The other tests that we give New Jersey Pass, I don't think that creates the incentive.
But I guess the logic from years ago, and I always remember this argument from parents and sitting in your parent meetings, was that same argument, that it would give the student the incentive to get those As at marking period, to give them that drive, so that they have something.
It's too prompt. It's increase test score and increase grade point average.
Right, but then, if you really feel that way, why is it only junior math and language arts?
Because we don't have the test right now in freshman and sophomore year.
Right, so.
If PARC's comes in, when PARC's comes into place, and we test every year, this might very well serve as a pilot for us to look at down the line. Is this worth doing?
All right, so let me rephrase this then.
Okay.
If there was no HESPA test, would you be here today asking for this?
No.
Okay, that makes it clearer.
I understood that, but.
Okay, but I just, well, because this is a conversation parents have had many years ago, and I know we've discussed this many times.
Again, it's, it's sound bites, back then, there was a lot of other things.
Right, you were always against it.
There was a lot of things going on. Now, I see this as a win-win, a two-pronged win, and maybe even three, because it'll give us some data to look and see if this, to see if this is worth it when PARC's comes in. Do we put this incentive out there for our kids as freshmen? Would have to take that first PARC exam in language arts or mathematics.
Okay, and if you look at the data, which I was going to, you said, first of all, you said it was presented to you, by whom?
Well, we, he was talking.
Right, what's happening is, obviously, there's a lot being rolled out from the state, and we're attending a lot of professional day workshops. So when you attend those workshops, you get to meet a lot of administrators from different districts, you ask them what they're doing in their district to succeed, and you get a lot of good ideas. And this is one idea that I received from another district.
So another district you know is doing this?
Yes.
Another district, I'm very familiar with, I was just briefed today that the final exam went from 16 percent to 25 percent in grade. So it's inconsistent, of course, you know, across the board on what their idea of achieving is.
They raised 25 percent.
I would argue, I think, the recap, so I understand, is that if they have an A minus or higher all four marking periods, and get an advanced proficient in that subject area on the HESPA, then they would be exempt from the final.
Correct. An A minus or better on the midterm, I hear better on the midterm.
And would that count if you had an AP English as well?
Yes.
Or AP math? You still would be exempt from the final?
Any other questions?
I hate to see him go to college and say, but professor, I'm exempt from the final.
Well, I'd like to, I didn't always take finals in college.
Okay.
No, we had terms and papers.
Take any finals, Mr.?
Once in a while.
Some, not a lot.
Not a lot. Well, I like.
If I thought for one second, Mr. Mackinon, this was going to hurt kids, I'd never.
Well, I don't, I don't think it's going to hurt, I just think it's my paradigm.
Yeah.
You know, and I'm, you know, look, if you're standing there before me, and you have three people who have abundance of respect for telling me, we thought about this, we think this is good, I'm reluctant to say I don't think it's good.
Certainly.
You're looking at this as a year trial basis, so will you come back afterwards and say, look, this is how many kids we raised up to the HESPA?
Well, I can give you the data right now, you know, I certainly have no problem with giving you the baseline number, and then we'll do a look, see at the end of the year, and see if we've improved.
So this is something that you want to start and let the kids know Monday or Friday?
Right.
Did you look at the, like, say, the numbers from last year, and how many students this would have impacted had this been in effect last year?
Well, it's a little hard to do. Again, we don't have, last year's numbers aren't uploaded in our system yet, so what we did was, we did some, Mr. Glock is great about going through the database and getting us information, and we were able to put together, the figures we were able to put together, there's only 18 students had straight As last year, without plugging in the final.
In math and?
In language arts, and 15 in math.
Last year's junior class?
Last year's junior.
Last year's junior.
Junior class.
Okay.
Okay, so that's 4 percent and 3 percent. So, you know, it's not affecting that many kids.
Not a lot of kids.
Okay?
And you don't even know if they, what they scored, so they might not have even been advanced.
And, right, to correlate them to proficient or advanced proficient, we can't, we can't do that yet.
So the number would only go down, can only go down?
Correct. Right. And at 4 percent, the only place you got is up anyway, and 3 percent. So that's why I said it's a double-pronged, you know, win, as far as we were concerned. Not thinking, you know, this has no impact on whether kids take the AP test, this has no impact on SAT tests or their preparation, this is strictly, you know, their coursework.
So when do you get the HESPA results back?
We get the HESPA results the end of May.
Beginning of May.
So they won't go until May anyway?
If it's.
If they're going to be exempt, until they get the test.
Well, that's in March, so you'll probably get it back in April, I think.
No, well, we get them sometime in May, I mean, they're not going to split hairs. We get them in May, we'll evaluate them in May, and.
So you could give me that information now, then, because you have the HESPA results for last year's junior class.
I have the information, it's not uploaded into our database yet.
Okay, but it's a.
I have it in paper.
Right, so in other words, you could pull that now, and then next year, give me a comparison to see if it went up.
Well, I'm going to give you numbers. I mean, if you want individuals, that's, I guess, not the one to do.
No, no.
But the numbers I have, I have 18 and 15.
Right, but you don't have their correlating.
I have 103 and 116, right. No, we don't.
You don't have the correlating.
Right. If you give me the names of those 33 kids who got the straight As.
Yeah, we can find out. I have the individual test scores, we just don't have the electronic.
Right, yes. Mrs. Zeig, can you look at them?
I have mixed feelings about it, but I think, I think it'll, it is an incentive to the students. I don't see that it's going to cause any problems, I don't see that much of a downside. Like Mr. Brown said, it's only one year, because this is the last year for the HESPA. And, you know, I'm not generally in favor of exempting students from exams for the sake of exempting them, but I think, you know, what gets published in the papers and the school report cards and so on, like Mr. Brown said, and the ratings for the school district are based on things like HESPA scores, so if we can get those advanced proficient numbers up, we've done very, very well over the past several years, getting the partially proficient numbers down very, very low for both math and language arts. And the next step is to raise those advanced proficient numbers, so I think that.
We're less than 40 kids that need remediation in the building. And, you know, the effort, we put quite a bit of effort in both remedial classes, the SI classes, tutorial programs, you know, electronic programs, we put a lot of effort into that level of kid. And now, I think deservedly, the upper-level kids deserve a little impetus, a little push along, and this will provide a little bit of a boost.
Well, since I didn't realize you wanted to implement so soon, I was going to recommend that the curriculum committee digest this, but since you're looking for an answer tight, I guess.
Well, no, we could certainly put it off for a couple of weeks, and then we could always roll it out to the kids. I'm not worried about that. If we have it as a target back to school night, which is October, I would think it's still a win.
Well, I'll just add one more question. Just as a student, I mean, this was available to me, it always would give me the incentive to get that A, to get exempt from the final exam, but I would just like to know, and I understand you're all concerned with the HESPA, but I do agree, the HESPA doesn't get you into college.
Right.
Okay, so just for the flip side, do other schools do senior exemptions like we do? Or is that unique?
So, I think it's as universal, I mean, I think it's six or one half does it, I don't think there's anyone to say, you know, the whole county does it, or the whole county doesn't do it. You can get some that do it, some that don't.
I just would like to know, like, I think it's a great incentive to get students to strive for that A, which we've talked about years ago, but on the flip side, is there any downside from a transcript, from a record, for our school profile, that that would be something looked upon negatively when you went to college? That would be my concern.
Again, I don't see it, because it doesn't impact many of our kids as seniors, when that profile goes in, they're already accepted or not.
Right, but there are, right, I get that, but colleges look at our high school profile, and they'll, I could have a 4.0 student here and a 4.0 student at another school, and that profile is going to make the difference in whether that's.
Don't forget.
Which is another reason why we went to.
As you said, as you said, we've made strides in that regard, by going to the 130, by cutting out the early dismissal, by adding AP courses, by adding the Apex, the electronic courses that were.
Right, and I understood that's the reason we did it. I would just like to know that this wouldn't be something that would negatively impact our strive to raise that profile.
Well, let me just tie in that HESPA scores are part of that profile of the college attack.
Right.
You know, the average HESPA score is part of that.
But, but on the flip side, when you're talking about 18 students at this impact, and that's going to be a profile for the whole school, I want to know that the negative isn't greater.
I don't see a negative, and I don't see it negatively affecting our profile at all, because it's, again, it's something that, if it works, it's just going to be a positive impact. You're going to see more As, you're going to see higher test scores.
Right, but then, but saying that, if you're going to say that, then why don't we implement it for more than just this, if you feel that way? If you're going to drive more As, why would you?
Because remember, it's test scores, test scores is a big part of it, are a big part of it.
Right, but I'm just looking from a college perspective, if you're going to drive more As by doing it, then you would want to.
Yeah, but As are relative, it doesn't correlate to, it doesn't correlate to some standardized measure, As are just inflation. You know, I could give out all As, we saw that in our phys ed department last year when we did a study about the statistics of midterm exams.
Right, but does the student's HESPA score drive that college admission?
No, HESPA score does not drive a college admission.
But the A does.
They're foolish to say that. But it's all, it's all, it's a combination of the A and the HESPA score.
So your argument is that you can do both, you can increase the numbers.
That's what we're looking for.
Okay. Mr. Mackinon, one thing, please, I'd like to mention, one of the things over the last several years, I've mentioned that Mrs. Vakto was on board with this also, was when our was when our students are getting into college, there's a lot of remedial that they have to do. And I think with this incentive of driving students to get better grades and accumulating knowledge is going to stop a lot of that, our, our, increase in order of students going in and being able to complete four years of college in four years instead of having to take remedial courses to get them up to a college level.
Dr. Afana, you wanted to say something?
Well, Mr. Mackenon and I spoke about this. I'm supportive of, of the program and now it's clearer to me. Statistically, the null is only approximately, what'd you say, about four percent?
Right.
You know, I, I think it's a good pilot program and that it could move on. But I remember when Park comes in, kids are gonna be tested to death. Fi- final exams are gonna, going to be part of either an SGO or whatever. So I don't see this as being something of, you know, putting final exams on the back burner. When these kids come, not in fourteen, fifteen, they're gonna take multiple tests. They're going to take multiple SGOs so that they have a benchmark and they also have a final, a, a final, that's not really a final exam, but based on the SGO. I think it's a, it's a good leapfrog maybe into looking into other subjects. Mr. Mackenon and I said, he was talking about, you know, about social studies, we're about, you know, the subjects. I think this is a good, maybe a good place to start, as Mr. Brown said, it's a pilot. And I think we should look at it that way. If he gives us till the beginning of October, believe your, um, back to school night is like the beginning of October, get a curriculum committee.
I, I love that, you know, based on the conversation, hearing questions, we can probably just give you an answer. Mike, does anybody from the board object to this, or this?
No, but I have a couple of comments.
Speak.
I'm trying.
Okay, wait, you didn't get my attention. I didn't look this way.
I was looking at, I was looking at the juniors and how many tests they're taking. So they're taking the PSATs, the SATs, and the HESPA, and the midterm. So I agree to have them, as long as they have A's. And that's my question, is it a average A or is it a straight across the board A?
All four.
Individual A.
Every, every group, an N and A target.
Right, okay. And the same thing with the, with, as a senior, you're taking SATs probably twice, your AP, your midterm. And I also like that idea of having them exempt.
So, to answer your, because you just mentioned some, so if a kid got marking period one a B plus, they got three A pluses. He'd be above the, but he would be exempted, and those averages might be higher than a nine.
Correct.
Okay.
Right. So, I, I mean personally, I like the average then. Because once, like, and I know that this happened with my daughter, because once she got a B plus, maybe that was the third marking period or the second marking period, she said, well, you know, I, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna knock my socks off to get an A plus because I'm gonna, so she still worked hard, but she's still, you know, she's not gonna work maybe as hard to be exempt. So I like the idea of the average. And, um, and I think that those mid, those finals are, are definitely, they tend to bring the grade down. You know, and, um.
Not if you get a hundred.
Well, did you get a hundred? I don't know anybody that got, that, that improved the grade, I'm sure it has.
I got a hundred and nine.
But I don't know too many students that have improved, so.
Okay. Anybody else from the board have any, any concern? Tom got a hundred, okay. He had a little time, he's on.
Was that a present?
Tom and I, we got a hundred. Does anybody from the board have any concern or, so we can give these gentlemen an answer? I mean, the principal and three vice presidents here telling us a good idea, the superintendent's on board. I'll say, oh, I'm expecting to see a whole bunch of advanced proficient.
What's a whole bunch? I'd be happy with ten, you know, any, any.
That'd be my administrative goal to check.
Anything that's.
Anybody have objection, if not, good luck. I guess you got a board vote.
We'll let you get, no, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You ready guys?
Can I go away from my presentation?
That's a good answer, Mr. Brown.
Moving right on, everybody forgot minutes of the regular executive session of August twentieth. Anybody have any concerns? I know there was an email that came out with a correction, um, to a minute. Does anybody else have any other corrections or deletions?
Yes.
Mrs. Bruno?
In, in the minute, I didn't see, um, our discussion about the grant from the United Arab, Arabists.
The new one came out.
The new one came, I didn't see it.
On the discussion indicated, Mrs. Back gave the status.
Thank you.
Other than that, anybody else have any deletions, additions in the minutes, have not accepted motion to accept and file the minutes?
So.
Can I roll call vote?
I need a second.
Second.
Oh, second.
Mr. Balka?
Christine.
Thank you. Mrs. Back?
Yes.
Mr. Bishada?
Yes.
Mr. Brzezinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Bento?
Yes.
Mrs. Rukia?
Yes.
Mrs. Crapp?
Yes.
And Mr. Mackenon.
Yes, in the past, we've had some email communications about, once the board approves the minutes, what is the policy to get them posted online?
Um, my new, uh, new assistant has now learned how to post them. So hopefully within two days she'd be able to post them.
That's our plan.
That's our goal, within two days.
Yeah, I know. Right, um, moving right along, let's just see the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mackenon. A, buildings and grounds, there's a, um, building use at Sanso for a cultural program. And, uh, an approval for substandard rooms, as noted, and that's, uh, we do this every year, those rooms don't really change. And to rescind the request to use the middle school that we talked about last meeting. Any questions with A?
Number one, is that a terrible group using, you believe, or?
There, there are sayable residents that are involved. That, that's not, um, Indian cultural events is not Asian Indians, it's Native American Indians. I, I know maybe two, it's not. I can't say it's predominantly sayable.
But it's, it's a mixture, I would say.
Is that twelve-thirty AM?
Yeah, that's what it's supposed to be.
PM to twelve-thirty AM?
Yeah, they usually go to midnight, of course, you're going backwards in time there.
Yeah, okay, I'll fix that, thank you.
And they've used our facility many years ago.
Okay, B finance, um, some disposal of equipment, uh, as noted in one and two. And textbooks, uh, no child left behind, consolidating grant application acceptance, a six-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty-three dollars, as noted. Um, and then, uh, for our, um, roster, we're establishing a grade five resource center class. Um, approved PSNG as a direct install program for the energy efficiency upgrade at the middle school. And again, establish a grade five LLD class, which we need an additional special education person due to the fact that our enrollment increased and Ms. Marr, um, so eloquently, uh, herself another teacher. Any questions with section B?
Dr. Afana?
Yes, sir.
Number two, the, uh, the books that we're going to dispose of, are we going to give them to the, say, a disadvantaged country such as Haiti or something like that? Or how are we, they're not gonna go in the garbage, are they?
Is your recycle?
I would give, uh, some, um, what we're finding out, some of these books are really out of circulation. I know I had a conversation with Ms. Brady the other day about certain books. Some do wind up going to third world countries, some do not.
I know Mr. Preston had spoken to me about it, and he was unable to find an organization that would accept the books. Um, most of the countries to ship it overseas, they want us to pay for the shipping costs to send it overseas.
Usually go to recycle site.
Yeah. Uh, moving to C, personnel non-certified, free, free resignations. Uh, rescind the employment of a part-time paraprofessional. There's a few unpaid medical leaves as listed. Uh, and, and the amendment of a, of an assignment of a par, part-time paraprofessional. Um, and also amend the assignment of a part-time, a paraprofessional in LLD class and an MD class. We're moving some people around this time of the year. Uh, we start moving around some of the paraprofessionals. So it's a, you know, it's a, it's a fluid kind of situation until, uh, the first two weeks of the year is over. Just to try to make sure that we can accommodate all the children that are in special education. Um, number eleven is, uh, once again, uh, it's, um, making some amendments, uh, to the assignments for the paraprofessionals. As noted, uh, retroactively increase, um, a black seal, uh, salary for an individual, as noted in number twelve. Um, improve the employment of, uh, many paraprofessionals and some non-personnel, uh, non-certificated personnel, as noted. I know everybody asks me the question, sometimes I get confused with fourteen and fifteen. Fourteen is new to our district, never worked as a substitute. And fifteen are their reemployment of the substitutes as listed on page seven, eight, nine, ten. And I believe eleven. Uh, any questions with that section?
At the last meeting, we had hired a part-time secretary and I asked you who it was for, and I thought you told me it was for Kim Marazo's job, but we're hiring one tonight. Did we split that job into two?
No. But, but, no, uh, one person went for Kim Marazo's job. There were so many open secretarial jobs, I think that might have gone into, um, is that?
Cause the last, my, this one says special services and last month it was, um, at the Sanso school, I thought that was the one.
Mr. Brown, this is going down into, into, uh, special services department for Beth Nathan? Or, or is this for, that's what?
Carolyn is Beth Nathan.
Okay.
And it was my understanding that, uh, Marshall was.
I'm sorry, what?
You gotta keep in mind, she also worked in the UES, the upper elementary main office in San Marazo.
Right, and the last meeting we hired one for that school, and that's who I.
That's, I believe that one's going downstairs to work in that main office and this one's going upstairs.
Okay, so whose job was it in last month then? Cause I, this one was her job.
I don't know what.
There are no increases in staff as far as the secretaries, as people being redeployed. So there are so many changes.
Is this, is this job at the upper elementary school?
Which one are you talking about?
This one here on page six.
Which?
What name?
Which, which name?
Martha?
Frank, Dr. Afana, if I could, I think, Phyllis, you have to keep in mind, Mrs. Marazo was a full-time.
Right, that's why I said, was it, did you split the job into?
Part in, part, part in one office, part in the other. So we're taking one, it's one position that worked in two different departments, now being two part-time positions.
Which was my first question?
That's it.
I don't know the name of the other. It's really, it's replacing Kim Marazo in both positions, but as a part-time.
Right.
So last month was him for the upper elementary. This time it's for Mrs. Marazo as the special service.
So we took the one position, it's split it into.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Now that I'm confused.
There are.
I'm confused. I'm always confused. Uh, moving on to personnel certified, um, the resignations as listed. Unpaid medical leaves, pregnancy leaves, um, some transfers, as noted, um, these are all voluntary transfers or transfers that we move people around. Um, amended salaries as, as listed. We had a little glitch in our program and subsequently we had to, um, redo some of the salaries so that they, um, were accurate. Um, request to approve, um, Ms. Masendo as the affirmative action officer and a homeless liaison. Um, and change in degrees status, approve appointment of a head junior advisor at a high school. Uh, an approval of an attendance officer and retroactively, um, appropriate another four thousand dollars for IEP meetings for teachers that, uh, did those, uh, along the summer. Uh, some professional bases noted, um, on number thirteen, on page thirteen. Um, and, and about, uh, eight or ten new, um, employees that we just hired over the past two weeks, as well as fifteen and sixteen are substitutes that, again, fifteen is, is a brand-new person or brand-new people and that have not worked before. And, um, the sixteen are people that are being re-employed, uh, under the, um, terms and conditions of substitutes in the past. That brings us to policy, any questions with D?
Yes. Number sixteen on, seeing on Cheryl Balk, page fourteen.
Okay.
And then Ivan Franowski, page sixteen and seventeen.
You have standing?
Yes.
Get down there.
You got those then?
Standing on Balka.
Franowski.
I have a question, are we, uh, fully staffed now? Do you still have one?
Uh, we still have about six people to go. And very difficult ones. Um, we have three, two speech, I believe, I talked to, um, Mr. Burn the other day. It's hard to get those speech people, we're still trying. Um, I also have, um, a counselor, a behavioral counselor that we're looking for. Um, and we're also, I believe there is a, um, media specialist person as well as a school nurse. And I think that's about it. And we have like one part-time person, which we'll get.
So do we have a substitute nurse?
Yes, yes.
In the past, you've shared speech therapists with other districts, is, is, is that an option?
Well, I know, a lot of times what we have done in the past is, um, we went to these services to try to get, uh, these people to come in and now they rate and work for a while until we get somebody. Very difficult to get speech people.
Didn't we share one with South River last year or?
Um, I'm not sure.
I don't think so. Speech, she was a teacher of the line.
That's right. You're right. Okay.
Okay, um, moving to policy. Um, we're going to use the, um, Charlotte Danielson version two, two thousand thirteen. Um, and there's a second, um, resolution in the policy section which reads, um, and this is what we discussed before about the waiver, uh, as far as our evaluation system. Uh, the Board of Education is requested to approve an equivalency application to the, uh, New Jersey Department of Education regarding the proposed regulation at NJAC six A, call intent, to reduce the number of required observations of tenured teachers from three short evaluations to two short evaluations. And that's what Kevin has brought up at the July meeting, we discussed it a little bit at the August meeting. And now we're at the last stages to try to go to the state to give us this waiver. Well, we're in the last stages and hopefully they'll approve it. Any questions for policy, King? But now, moving to curriculum, um, there are no, um, HIVs this month. Um, the Board of Education, um, is re-adopting curriculum, um, as noted, that was up on the, um, the portal. Textbooks, uh, two thousand thirteen, fourteen textbook and supplemental book list, as noted on page eighteen. Um, number four, some curriculum guides that were sent out. The reason we did this so quickly, these are new courses, we have to try to get these out as quickly as possible. We apologize that it was so late, but we got them a little bit late and we're trying to get them out. Um, number five are replacements as usual and services in special education is noted. Any questions in that section? With none, moving to G. Co-curriculum, nothing for this meeting. H, uh, waiver of transportation is noted, transportation routes in number two and number three. Um, the approval of four trips, as noted on page twenty-three, four A, B, uh, and five, and six, as noted. Um, and number seven, I conclude my report.
Any questions, comments from the board, any agenda before I open up the public comment?
Mr. Mackenon, I have a question for Mr. Burn.
Um, Mr. Shaw.
Um, Mr. Burn, um, on number five, page nineteen, the question I have is how many students as of now going into the calendar year are going to be a district placement?
Approximately, a little less than a hundred. I can't, I, I don't have an exact number for you, I can get an exact number for you.
Yeah, it's usually on the agenda. It's the last.
We have to, we have to make sure we put the other, that's definitely on the agenda.
But that number in the past has been one-thirty across.
I think we would be usually waiting for the second meeting in September when we have.
Right, that works out for a while, right. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, I'll open up the public now for any comments or questions on the agenda. Um, I will open up again for the public for any business that may have come before this board. Right now, does anybody have any questions or comments on the agenda only? Seeing none, I'm entertaining a motion to accept and file superintendent's report.
Second.
You got a motion in second, they are roll call votes.
Mr. Balka?
Yes, Mr. Sam.
Mrs. Back?
Yes.
Mr. Bishada?
Yes.
Mr. Brzezinski?
Uh, I'll be abstaining on, on page nine. Page nine, Stanley Grabowski.
Stay with me as I point the name.
It's a little.
On the substitute cafeteria. And on page ten, Martin Biancamano and Stan Grabowski.
And you mentioned a third name?
No, Stan Grabowski was on that.
Martin Biancamano, the second one down in the list, same list, substitute.
On page ten.
He's on the, uh, substitute custodian, I mean.
Oh.
Second one, thank you.
Sorry, I shouldn't have told you.
Anyone else?
Everything else is good.
Okay. Continue to move on.
Mrs. DeBento?
Yes.
Mrs. Rukia?
Yes.
Mrs. Crapp?
Yes.
And Mr. Mackenon.
Yes. Um, Mr. Sykes not here today, he got called out earlier today, um, at a state, so he's not here. There's nothing he shared with me, um, with the delegates of the School Board Association. Um, just for those board members that are attending the conference, you need to let the BA's office know by September tenth what days that you'll be down there. If you can do that, it makes their life a little easier. Um, committee reports have a non-discussion, we have, um.
Mr. Mackenon, just for the board and public's knowledge, the roof on Eisenhower's completed.
Right.
Patio at Truman's completed.
Right.
Four bathrooms in the middle school are completed. The stair towers in the middle school have been painted and there's continuous progress being made.
Good on the buildings and grounds, making sure that we continue to upgrade our infrastructure. Excellent, thank you for sharing evidence. Yeah, the bathrooms in the middle school. Yes.
If, if I could, just to follow up on that, I, I wanna thank all the maintenance and custodian workers for their outstanding job during the summer. Once again, wonderful job, our buildings are ready to go. Just can't be proud of the way they got these buildings ready in the short time that they had.
Thank you. Um, when I have a discussion I wanted to bring up last meeting, there was concern, uh, from a member of the public that Sable did not hire, um, Sable Board of Education didn't hire many Sable residents. So I was kinda curious, because I did quote some, um, some statistics that I had that were two years old and, um, I need to correct that because my percentages were wrong. Actually, it's a little higher than what I quoted. So, um, we, every board member should have received this, I actually, that'd be sent to every board member. Um, there was concern, especially with non-certified staff, i.e., um, maintenance, custodians, um, security, secretaries, transportation, um, that we didn't hire Sable residents. It was even suggested that Dr. Afana have a sign over his door that says Sable residents need not apply. So I was curious to see where our numbers are. Um, some of these percentages, you have to realize, we have some addresses that have Parlin on it. Now, Parlin, as you know, is a section of Sable, is a section of Overage, so some of those people may live in Overage. Um, but I imagine that number is, is not gonna skew the statistics that much. And there are also some people who have a South Amboy address but are still Sable residents. And there are also some people who have a South Amboy address but are still Sable residents and attend our schools. So when you look at it, I'll just pick a few categories. I don't want to bore you with all of them, how it's broken up. But let's take cafeteria workers. Of 64 that are currently employed, 60 of them are local, which gives us a 93.75 percent. And if anybody wants a copy of these, we will provide you a copy of this information. Custodial maintenance, we have 60 that are currently employed, 48 of 73.3 percent are local. Another category, which is a large number, is transportation, 32 transportation, I'm assuming, is a bus drivers and all mechanics. 27 of those reside here in town, which is 84.38 percent. Obviously, teachers, which like many districts, a lot of teachers don't necessarily reside in your community, but we have 470 certified teachers. Of that number, 145 of them live locally, that's 30.85 percent. Now, that's going to fluctuate, and you can't say that these are exact numbers, because you're going to have some people that live in Sable, got a job here, then moved out of Sable. Well, there were some people that were at a district, then they moved, they got the job, then they moved into district, so that numbers fluctuate. I don't imagine it's going to skew the data that much. So what I did is I took all those categories that are non-certificated and I added them up, and what I wound up with is of 201, 167 of them reside here, which gives us an 83.1 percent, which is a little higher than I give the 78 percent I quoted last time. So I just felt that it was important, since that was mentioned at a public meeting that was televised, that I just give you the current statistics. This is from our human resources, and with everything computerized, it's really easy to extrapolate that data, depending on how you want to run it, and that's what we currently have. So I just wanted to put that to rest, that Sable does do, I think, an excellent job in hiring the majority of our non-certified staff from within, in the township. So I just wanted to share that, which would set the record straight. And I know Mrs. Bruno Ruculia has been working on an issue that she has been championing for about the last two years, is she asked that she be able to discuss that in public with us. So, Bruno, please.
Right about the time that I got on the board, there was a lot of discussion about establishing a sick bank for our staff, for our teachers in particular, and the bank that we could establish was rather cumbersome to administer. So I spoke to some of our legislators, and over and over and over again, over the last three years, and we finally got a bill that's in committee right now. It probably won't be signed for a couple of months, but the NJEA fully supports it. They're excited about it, and what it does is it permits boards of education to establish donated leave programs to their employees as an alternative to the sick banks that are currently allowed, so that we can donate sick time to each other. So if a staff member is very ill, or has a family member who's very ill, other staff can directly donate their sick time. There will be some restrictions on it, but it, I think, opens it up so that we can really help out some people that over the last few years that I've been on the board really could have used some to stay on payroll and help them out. So this is in committee right now. Assemblyman Craig Coughlin has really been working very hard on it, and hopefully he'll hit the governor's desk in a couple of months, within the next few months.
And I think this is a great initiative, and I always had issues with the fact that someone who has a large number of sick days accumulated, why they couldn't say, I want to give X number to this one person. There's no additional cost to the board, because, you know, you have an X number of sick days that you have amongst your employees, and if somebody wants to donate them, and then people, you know, were, there's some issues that were against this, were saying that, well, what if that individual needs those days? Well, you got to take that into consideration when you donate.
That's part of the, that's part of the law, I think, that there are only so many days, and they're interested in feedback, what people think, but like I said, NJEA is really happy with it, so I think it'll help a lot of our staff out.
Well, I think this is a great initiative, and we appreciate you championing that and keep us impressed. So next time I see Assemblyman McCompton, I'll mention that to him. And I know his, I know his sister, who is the president of the South Amboy Board of Education, I've talked to her, and she's right in this cage too, so. Okay. Anything else for discussion before I open it up for the public? Okay, anybody in the public who's come up to speak? Yes, there's another one.
Our school's booklet.
Yes.
I know that it was delivered to the post office, but I haven't gotten mine yet. I don't know about the post office kind of, that's a ball?
Not sure, because the printer delivered it to the Kilmer Post Office last Tuesday afternoon. We've never had, you know, that's right around the time it normally is delivered, and normally everyone gets it before Labor Day. I'm not sure, I've been making phone calls tomorrow. All the schools have copies, there are copies in the public library. I brought about 20 copies with me tonight, so.
Can we get it online? Because don't parents need to look at like bus stop groups and stuff?
The bus stops are online. The whole booklet is not online at this point.
Could we scan one and get it online?
Mrs. Paul, I know that there was a discussion last week about doing that. It's a little bit tough to scan because...
Take it apart.
I asked you two books. Take everything apart and scan it.
Right, take it apart.
Right, but the bus, the bus stops are listed on the website. They are both under transportation, and they are under news. We have them moved over the weekend under news, the back-to-school nights, and the calendar, all that is on the front page. Those are really the key things, I think, that people are looking for right now.
Yes, I know the couple that was here last meeting knew about the bus route changes, because the information wasn't available. Lastly, before I open up the public, this is a Chromebook. It looks much like a laptop, and I'm, Sandy, if you could just explain to the public what this capability is versus a normal laptop, and how this will be integrated into what we're doing in the district?
Okay, Chromebook, one of the things with the Chromebook, it's a very light device. It is not a tablet, as you can see. It looks exactly like a laptop. The difference between it and a regular laptop is that it uses Chrome, uses the Google operating system, kind of like if you have a Droid cellphone, it uses that operating system rather than a Windows operating system. So because of that, it tends to use a lot of the Google applications, including Gmail. It uses Google Drive. It uses Google Plus, Google Hangout. As you can tell by now, I use a lot of Google. So because of that, that's what they use. The one thing that's great about using that device is that it uses what is called a flash drive, meaning you open it, it starts. That's all you have to do to it. All you have to do is just open the device, it immediately starts. Compared to when you use a Windows device, it has to load the operating system, and it takes a long period of time. That's one of the things that it can do. The Google Chromebook that you see here is what a lot of school districts are moving towards. For Say County is buying a ton of them because they plan to use it for the park exam. That's what we're planning to have it for, for the kids to be able to prepare for the park, and also to use for the park exam also. The only difference is you cannot use anything Microsoft on it. So you can't use, you can use the web-based Microsoft Outlook, you can't use regular Outlook like how we have in the district. It's not Microsoft Word, it's Google Docs, okay? It's not Microsoft Excel, it's called Spreadsheets. It's not called PowerPoint, it's called Presentations. But just to let you know, you can convert from one to the other, because I have to convert, I convert all the time, between, between the two type of apps. So, but that's what the device is. It's, as you can see, it's very easy to use, it's not a hard device, and the best incentive about it, just to let everybody know, if you've ever been to Best Buy, it's only $249.
Have we put a purchase order in for them yet?
I have 700 on its way.
700?
Right now, on its way, yeah. Actually, I've been trying to work with, between Google and CDW, to make sure that the network piece of it is all set up before it walks in the door.
They didn't have these when Mr. Bishada was going to school?
They didn't have them when I was going to school either, so, yeah.
I think one of the great things about the Chromebook is that when kids are working on project, they start in school, they go home and they log right onto their Google account, their project is there. They can work on it at home, come back to school, and there's their project. They don't have to use flash drives, they don't have to save anything or go back and forth. It's right there when they log into their accounts, and I think that's a real big advantage to go on web-based.
I guess when we get these, I guess the technology community, we've got some positive kids will be bringing these home, or maybe just using in school.
I don't know about that. I wouldn't accept.
I guess the answer would be no.
We can talk about it, Mr. Alford.
We're also using the $796,000 grant we received for Hurricane Sandy. We're going to use a large part of that to purchase additional Chromebooks.
How many?
We're not sure, because we're waiting to see. We have to get the consultants in here to see. We first have to make sure that the infrastructure is up to the point that is required by the Sandy grant, so we have to first use the money, money to take care of that, and then the remaining money will be used for Chromebooks, and we put something, we plan to do a little bit for professional development.
So if we turn 400 of these on in this building, is our infrastructure be able to handle them, they won't be slowing, slowing up the system?
Where are the initial 700 designated?
Right, understand. You all know what to do.
They're going to be throughout the district, we ask.
Through all grade levels?
Yeah. I'm not so sure if they're going to go that much into first and second kindergarten and first grade, I'm not so sure they're going to begin there, but I would say certainly beginning by third grade on up, because this is what we're planning to use for the park assessment, so we want to get the students used to using this and taking assessments on this. So we have to work out the exact numbers and how we're going to be using them.
I think this would be good too, the board members, you know, that go to PTO meetings, I'll be going to the SUES one to be able to get one of these, to show parents. A lot of people ask, what's a Google book? And I think if they see one, they understand what it's for, you know, that'd be...
Maybe we can even bring it to the first pick meeting.
Yeah.
Which is next Monday.
Yeah, bring it up, bring it up, everybody.
September 9th. And we'll put a little plug for that, our first pick meeting of the year will be Monday, September 9th, in the High School Media Center at 6:30.
And I'd like to have at least one for Sable Day 2 at our table. Some people come talk, so we can show them about Chromebooks, if we can make sure that happens. One, two, three.
We have two right now.
That's fine, that's fine. One is fine.
I'm not going to pick more than yours.
That's fine, okay. Anything else for open up the public? For this time, I'd like to open up the public for any business may have come before the board. Please come up, state your name and address, recommend. Ms. Bloom, there was a lady behind you that was up first.
To tell you about the Affordable Care Act and health care reform that is right upon us, and I am the patient navigator at Jewish Renaissance Medical Center in Platteville, established as the nation's first faith-based federally qualified health center. As you may be aware, the health care reform law was signed into law in 2010, and it will come into effect in 2014, which means every American and legal immigrant resident will have to purchase insurance or may face paying a penalty. This is also referred to as the individual mandate. So when can people enroll? The big date to keep in mind is October 1st, 2013. On this day, the online health insurance marketplaces will open up nationwide, and these are essentially one-stop shops to purchase health insurance, affordable health insurance. And if people would like help to enroll, specifically uninsured people, there are going to be physical locales, places where they can go to obtain help to enroll in the New Jersey marketplace. For example, in-person assistants like myself will be trained and certified to assist people to determine their eligibility for coverage and for financial assistance options, and to enroll under a qualified health plan, a health insurance plan. The Jewish Renaissance Medical Center is right here in Platteville, not too far, and we will be providing assistance to folks to enroll under the health insurance marketplace. Our staff and I will be able to assist members who walk through our doors. If you were to ask me what's the most important thing that someone can do to prepare for the marketplace that's opening up in just a few short days, I would tell you to get your documents in order, because there are four types of information that will be asked for, including social security numbers or document numbers for legal immigrants, employer and income information, health insurance policy numbers for everyone who's covered currently at someone's home, and employer-based health insurance options that are currently available to the employee, whether or not they are covered by those options. So if you or a member of your family, in your community, a friend, needs health insurance, we'd be glad to help you at the Jewish Renaissance Medical Center. In the meantime, everyone can visit healthcare.gov to get information about the health insurance marketplace that is opening up October 1st, with coverage beginning as early as January 2014. We're here to serve. If there are any parent-teacher nights, back-to-school nights, or other events where it would be helpful, in your opinion, for me to come and do education and outreach around the Affordable Care Act, or even the health insurance marketplace itself, please feel free to contact me. I have a few pieces of literature here with me, and they list the documents that you're going to need, and also just some general information on the health insurance marketplace that is opening up. And I have my business card with me. Again, I'm stationed at the Jewish Renaissance Medical Center, but I'm here to help all the surrounding communities. We do a lot of community work with Sayerville, and so I'm very happy to be here, and I thank you for your time, and I will be staying around for a few minutes if you'd like to ask me some more questions afterwards. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Sandy, how is Affordable Health Care Act, I guess we never, we've been talking a lot about health benefits. How does that impact us, the majority of our employees currently have insurance?
Currently, I'm in constant consultation with Doyle Alliance over this. We're paying close attention, because there is going to be some type of requirement upon us based on the number of hours people work, but for us, that timeline has been pushed back to January of '15, so we still have some time. So we are paying attention as far as the district and the requirements that we're going to be required to.
So is there a potential exist that it could cost us more?
Yes, or we can make some adjustments, as some other districts have already started to do, to ensure that you don't go over the required timelines, timelines being worked to provide health care.
So Doyle and everybody set up for the part where the children can stay up until 26, or is it 23 is...
Revised by all those things, but we're paying close attention to the number of hours worked in order to get health coverage through your employer, and we may have to make some changes in the future.
Not for our public?
No, not for our public.
Gotcha. Thank you very much.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Ms. Michelle.
Yes, Michelle, Michelle.
Remember that.
Can't forget your name.
Mrs. Bloom.
Lucy Bloom, Chayanne Drive. I just wanted to talk to Helen on that sickly thing. As a past president of the association, we threw that around a lot, and the big drawback to that was that it would have to go into a bank, where the board would hold it, and then people on the board or people from the association would have to be the ones who decided who got the days. I think this is the best possible solution, because you know as well as I do, there are many, many of our employees who retire with sick days up the wazoo, and nobody gets the benefit. I just came off of two years on NJEA Executive Committee, and this is the first time I've heard this, so this must be just sneaking out. Is it out of committee?
It's in committee now. It went into committee during the summer, and I was going to wait until the governor was ready to sign it before I announced it, but it may be a while.
Do you really think he's going to sign?
Well, I've been, it's, it kind of...
Anything that benefits teachers, he's not going to sign.
It was written, I guess, in the script.
But I would hope that he would have some humanitarian insight in that a sick person could be helped, but I seriously doubt that he'll sign it, but I think it's a great thing, and I hope it happens, and we should continue to push forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bloom. Anyone else in the public like to speak? Mrs. Kilcombs.
Martha Kilcombs, 22nd Street. I appreciate all the information, Mr. McEnamore, since I'm the one that brought it up, and but I'm particularly interested in non-certified, and I'm reading here the substitute list, and the non-certified positions you have are 211 physicians. There are 167, is that correct, that are living in town?
Oh, you know, from four...
There are 201.
You said substitutes, that wouldn't be included here.
No, 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 non-certified physicians.
Non-certified, I, when I added up, I just added up the main categories. I didn't include like security, because there's only four. It's probably in the 220 area.
220, so there's 167 residing town.
Yes.
Looking at this list.
Which list?
Of the substitute list. I roughly counted over 350 names here for non-certified physicians looking for work. Some of them are duplicates, the same name will be placed on three different...
That's correct.
...lists and whatever, but they are taxpayers, and they are, still should be considered for physician, and when I see just 167 of the non-certified... And when I see just 167 of the non-certified, so that still bothers me.
Yeah, because when you look at these substitute lists, just because somebody is a substitute, or you talk about the non-certified. Yeah, I understand what you're saying. I'm assuming all the substitutes are local residents.
I mean, they pay taxes, they live in the community, and I think they should be considered for the position. Especially since it's a non-certified position.
I will agree, but you must admit that 83.1% is pretty good.
What is the percentage of administrators?
That live in town?
Yes.
We have 27 on our payroll. And we have five that live in town, so that's 18.52%. But I know there's one case where someone lived here when they took the job and then moved to my... There's some, and I know there's three of them right back there that live in town. Four, there's four of them right there. So there's one other person.
And I happen to know them all. They live in town, I know them. The other thing was to, Helen, oh, go ahead.
No, you have to understand the specialization when you look at teachers and administrators. You know, that's why you have a smaller number that reside in the community with a non-certified.
Who are certified or who's qualified for the position. I understand that. My other question is to this bill, which I'm really happy about, and I think it's a long time coming, especially for people that are out. I know this has happened in the borough. I believe there was a policeman and a lot of them gave their time to him. Is this bill just for Board of Education, I mean, for teachers?
It's for Board of Education.
It's not for public employees, like policemen and whatever?
No, teachers were restricted to a certain kind of bank, where they had to give up their time and if it wasn't used, they lost it. The administration of it was rather cumbersome. So this is just for boards of education and their employees. And then there are restrictions. I have a few copies here that you can take a look at. It's only a draft. And from there, we can afford, they're looking for public comment on it, if anyone has any...
I know.
And then we would establish policy as to what the restrictions are. It's not just, "Well, Ms. Becco has the flu, so I'm going to give her my sick days." I think part of this is decent attendance, a good record. You can't give up all your days. You have to keep some for yourself. There are some, but it allows us to do something we haven't been able to do.
Which I think is a long time coming. And I appreciate him sponsoring the bill. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public like to speak? Seeing none, I'll take a motion for adjournment. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.